Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the budget workshop, the final budget workshop meeting on the 2019-2020 budget. Please rise for a moment of silence. The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein? Laffin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morgenstein?
Here.
Chortel?
Here.
Testa? Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Servoni?
Here.
And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to entertain motions to modify the budget as presented by the mayor for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. I will start with Counselor Chortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion. I'd like to give some background before I specifically make the motion. As many of you know, I'm a frequent user of community pool with my family, and it always causes me great pain every mid-August when the pool closes and the kids are still out of school. It seems like in the hottest months of the year, we don't get to use the pool. So, one of the things I was working on over the last few weeks was trying to find a way in the budget to fund the pool through Labor Day. The pool is currently scheduled to close on Sunday, August 11th at 7:00 p.m. I would like to see it close on Monday, September 2nd at 7:00 p.m. That way, we get the last three weeks of August, we get Labor Day. So, the first question was how much would this cost? So, at the public hearing on April 25th, I asked Park and Rec Director Golak. He indicated staffing would be about $20,000 for the lifeguards. This does represent about a 30% increase. The pool's open from mid-June to mid-August, so the pool is open for about 60 to 63 days. So, this extension is 21 days. So, it's about a 30% increase in the pool's operations. So, he indicated $20,000 for lifeguards, but he also said there are chemical costs, there's utilities. So, I had subsequent conversations with Steve Palermo from Public Works, and we figured out that the costs to run it from the utilities and the chemicals, basically, would all come out to about $30,000 total cost to keep the pool open the additional three weeks. So, I was just going through the budget, going through different numbers. I talked to various counselors offline, Counselor Zandry, Counselor Fishbein, Counselor Laffin, among others. And I met with the mayor on Monday, this week, with my proposal. We worked through it, we tweaked some things, and we arrived at the motion I'm going to make. And I'm very grateful to the mayor as well. He was very open, and we came to, I think, a really good agreement. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to fund this a few ways. The first thing we're going to do is, we're going to eliminate the town council raise. Chairman Servoni had put in a small raise for the council. The council has not a raise in forever of about $5,000. We're going to use that money and put it toward the pool. Sorry.
That was for all of the councils?
It was for all, right. I'm sorry. It was not Chairman Servoni's raise, it was for the whole council.
It actually was next term.
It was, and that was for next term. Yeah, there's some people out there thinking that it would've gone into effect after the election. So, sorry, people who are running for council who thought they were getting a raise. Go to the pool. The next thing we're going to eliminate is close to Council Marone's part. It's the town council phone line that Council Marone wants to eliminate, and that's $1,200. This is a phone line that... So, we have an office behind this wall across the hall. It's locked. No one's ever there. I guess the town uses it for meetings, like for departments. There's a phone in there. That phone doesn't... When that phone rings, it rolls directly to the town clerk. There's no one answering the phone. So, if you call the council, you just, basically, you're calling the town clerk. So, we're going to get rid of that. We're going to put that toward the pool. The next thing of note is, we are going to increase the pool tag prices. The feeling is, we are offering, basically, like I said, a 30% extended season. So, as such, we are going to raise the pool tag prices by $5, $5 across the board, whatever kind. There's different tags you can get. There's individual tags, there's family tags. So, we have a projection there that that's going to raise $10,000. That's based on pool tag sales of 2,000 tags sold. Now, we did sell more than that last year. We sold 2,400 last year, but last year was an uptick. The previous, I don't know, four or five years prior to 2018, the average was closer to 2,000. So, we're being conservative here, and that's on purpose. I mean, hopefully, we sell more. I know that we had the people who ran, say, the pool campaign, they did a survey, I think on Facebook, and one of the things they cited was that 90% of the people who don't buy pool passes, one of the reasons they don't buy them is that the pool closes too early in the season. So, I'm hoping that we will generate way more than this, but we wanted to be conservative with that. So, that's where 10,000 is coming. So, when you add that up, that left us about $13,850 short, and the mayor suggested we would take that from the contingency account, which I readily agreed with. So, that's how we plan on funding it. One other thing, you know, we talked about this at our public hearing a few weeks ago. There's no other logistical reason we can't do this. There's no other, you know, it's basically funding. So, we found the money, we've worked with the mayor, he's on board. So, I think, I really hope that everyone does get behind this. I'm personally very excited to bring the kids to the pool at the end of August, but we'll see if it passes. So, with that, what I'll do is, I will actually make the motion. And so, I'm going to make a motion... I'm going to do this all in one motion, and you all have written copies, but bear with me on this. I'm going to make the motion to increase the following expenditure lines: recreation by $20,000, Public Works by $7,000, Public Works Chemicals by $7,000, and Public Works Utilities by $3,000, for a total of $30,000 additional dollars toward expenditures. I'm also making, including in the motion, to increase the revenue line for swimming pool tags by $10,000. And finally, I'm motioning to decrease the following expenditure lines: town council regular wages by $4,950, town council telephone by $1,200, and the contingency fund, the general fund, by $13,850, for a total increase in revenues but reduction in expenditures of $30,000.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Laffin?
I just wanted to thank Counselor Chortel for putting in the extra footwork to put it all together and set up the meetings and talk to everybody and make it all kind of come together. So, thanks.
I will agree, this was nicely done, and I think it serves, it serves a purpose to benefit the townspeople. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Fishbein? Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Counselor Morgenstein, I believe you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. So, I'm very thankful that this budget does include capital funding for some work at the schools, roofing and oil tank replacement. My motion would incur a little further expenditure for work on our schools, which are certainly aging and in need of work, which our Board of Ed covers a lot of expenses that are not senior-related. In this town, if you're a senior citizen and by virtue of owning a home in Ashlar Village, you have a lower tax burden, the way our structure is done. So, I make the following motion. I move that we move $1,817,780 from the Board of Education line 430, repairs and maintenance, and form a line for an account on the government side of the budget accessible for Board of Education use for expenses incurred that are not providing student education in that line. Therefore, provide these non-education costs to be incurred by all residential taxpayers.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Counselor Chortel?
I appreciate any motion that, you know, involves thinking outside the box and, you know, challenging the status quo. So, in the spirit of that, you know, I love these discussions. I don't know on this one that I can follow it or support it. I mean, the first problem is legally, we cannot reduce the Board of Ed budget, meaning that state law requires the Board of... The Board of Ed, I think, they get $103 million. Last year, they have to get a minimum of $103 million next year, plus the increase in their collective bargaining agreements, you know, salaries go up, gas goes up, oil goes up. So, I don't know how this works in terms of that. If we're taking $1.8 million out, I don't know how you do that without increasing taxes for everyone, because you can't take it out, because they're only getting, I think, less than that already in the current budget. So, that's one concern I have. You know, this feels sort of like, there's, this issue's been out there. I think Jared Liu, who ran for mayor two years ago, has this on his website about capital and facilities, and we shouldn't have our principals worried about boilers, they should be focused on education. And I don't know, you know, that that's really a problem. You know, I say this as a former Board of Ed member, as somebody who has two children in the elementary schools. If there's a sidewalk at Fritz or a playground at Fritz that needs to be repaired, I don't want that, no offense, I don't want that, I don't want the town having to repair that. Then it's got to get in line with roads being paved, sidewalks being repaired. I think what we have now, where we have a separate area under the Board of Ed with Mark D'Antula, and then the Board of Ed's strategic plan prioritizing the physical plant, I think that's what we, I think that works really well. So, I feel like this idea has been out there. We have a Democrat-controlled Board of Education, no one on there has asked for this. So, I guess I have a concern about it from that perspective. I also have a concern that, again, I don't, I, this feels like a solution looking for a problem. You know, I have a concern about our elementary principals not having enough support, because they're being taught, they're being, they're in every PPT meeting, every disciplinary issue lands in their office, they're trying to teacher evaluations. I mean, if we want to help education, give them some administrative support. Pulling away facilities and this money, I don't see how it helps. I think it makes it harder. And again, I don't, I haven't heard the Board of Ed asking for this either. So, I have legal questions about it, as I said before, I have logistical questions about it. This idea's been out there because it's been campaigned on. And I just, I guess that that's where I am on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Laffin?
Yeah, I'm going to echo everything that Counselor Chortel said. I'm afraid that opens a legal Pandora's Box, but the budget increase, just looking at the book quick, to the Board of Ed is 1.7 million. So, this would put us below the increase, and we can't by state law not increase the Board of Ed's budget. And that's what this would be doing. So, there's another reason without a lot more than a kind of quickly kind of assembled motion. So, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I was going to ask what the amount was. I mean, we can, we can by law bring this change right down to the differential. That wouldn't be drawing them below the number, so we might have to make the amendment, but it doesn't sound like we've got the support here anyway. But the idea, the idea behind this is pretty simple. We've got all of these property and capital expenditures that are the responsibility of the Board of Education. We put together a Board of Education budget every single year, and you're absolutely correct. By state law, we can't, we can't make it less than the prior year, but this is part of the problem. Buildings become more expensive to maintain, operate, repair, and while there's a little bit of this cost on the outside, there's far too much of it on the inside. We could progressively do this. Okay, we can't do 1.8, we can do the 1.7. Move it on the outside, make it part of general government, make sure that the taxes are distributed entirely over the town, and then allow the money going into the Board of Education budget each year as we continually escalate this to go into the education services. The comment was just made that some of the principals could use some ancillary help. Well, the only way to do that would be to add even more to this line, which in future years, we'd have to continue to add to. If we start pulling these costs out, they're not responsible for it out of their Board of Ed budget, and it's taken care of over on the town side, then their direct budget can go more directly towards salaries, administration, assistant help, and educating the students. I think this is a, this is a smart move to try. And it's been campaigned on, but it hasn't been by anybody that's gotten into office. It has been brought up before, and if we have to amend the motion to at least bring it to a proper vote, then let's do that. Mr. Boz, can you, can you give me the exact change of the amount year over year, so that we're in line with state regulations and making sure they have at least the same budget? Okay. And I'd like to amend the motion to that cost. I'll let Gina do it, since it was her original motion.
Yeah, and let me just point out, so it would be, and Mr. Boz could tell us how to do such a thing, having an account that is accessible by the Board of Ed for use, it's not changing who, you know, draws that money to imply that someone different is now making those decisions. It would be accessible to them for these types of expenses, which would then be being shared evenly by taxpayers. So, I'll amend the motion. I make a motion that we move $1,760,872 from Board of Education line 430, repairs and maintenance, and form a line for an account on the government side of the budget accessible for Board of Education use for these expenses incurred but not providing student education, and therefore provide these non-education costs to be incurred by all residential taxpayers.
And I'll second that.
Mayor?
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to have general government responsible for repairs or any improvements in the schools. We don't know that that's the exact amount of money they will spend for that. They, they receive a lump sum of money and decide how they will spend it. It may be $1.9 million, it may be $1 million because of their, they set priorities. They may determine that there are capital projects that we fund through the capital program, and I think Phase 2 has just been, is it Phase 2 that was just bid? And there's another, I think we cite boilers and roof, some roof repairs, right? But that's where we are participating in facility improvements. I don't know how you'd, I don't know how this could be implemented in a practical way, and I think it definitely would impact the amount of money that the Board of Education then has to assign, whatever it feels are the priorities at the time. And the whole thing about the state law and electing a Board of Education is that they are entrusted with establishing the priorities. We could sit here and say, well, you know, you really should repair that sidewalk or something else. They determine that the higher priority is to do something else or repair the sidewalk. To take that away from them, I don't think would be in harmony with, with the purpose of their job, and it certainly complicates things on the general government side.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Morgenstein, I really like what you've done here. I like the spirit of this motion in that I politely disagree with the mayor. I think that it does make sense to duplicate maintenance on the town side and on the, on the Board of Ed side. Paving roads and fixing sidewalks are the same, whether they're done in, you know, in the town space or in Board of Ed space. So, I like the mode, the spirit of the motion, because I think that's sort of where it's going. I think that we need to take a more holistic approach to it, though, and decide, do we really need to have, you know, a Buildings and Grounds Director for the Board of Ed and a Public Works Director for the town, or could this all sort of be encapsulated under one thing and have all the, you know, everyone report to the town, and they're all public buildings, right? They were, everyone owns all of them, so why not have them all maintained by the same group? So, I really like the spirit of the motion. I like what you're trying to do. I just don't think that it quite, I think it's sort of a piecemeal solution to get to where I want to be, and I don't know that this is going to get us there. So, I like the motion, but I'm going to have to decline.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you. In response to Counselor Marone's concerns, you wouldn't get, get where you want to go, but it'd be a very good first step. You could look at it that way. It's not going to accomplish exactly what you're talking about. I like what you're talking about, too, but there's a way to get there. Maybe this would be the first step. I think, in response to Counselor Chortel's comment that, well, the Board of Ed hasn't asked for this, but they really have no reason to, because they're, they're, they're not responsible for determining how this money is generated. They just want to do their job, and that's take care of the schools. So, they're not going to, this is not something they even have to care about. All they care about is that this money is in the budget and that they can use it. I like the idea of this, of this, of this motion, because, let's be frank, it allows the, the money for capital work on town-owned buildings to be, to be generated by all of the taxpayers. Okay? It's more evenly distributed. It gives a break to the homeowners, and it puts a little bit of the, of the burden for this to those taxpayers that are exempt from paying taxes on the Board of Ed budget. Logistically, we can do this. I think it's misleading to say that because it would be in the town's budget, and a line item in the town's budget, the town would then be making the decisions about what work gets done. That, that's kind of a straw man argument. We simply work with them to make sure that they do the same thing they're doing now. They do the repairs that need to be done, when they need to be done, but instead of the money being cut out of their budget, it's being taken out of this line item, out of the town's side of the budget. The town's not going to decide what work gets done. Logistically, you could make this work. It might be a little extra work for certain people, but logistically, you could make this work. I think it's a good idea. I think it shows forward thinking. A lot of people have made comments in the past, you know, why does one organization not have to pay taxes for education funding? Well, we made that decision a long time ago. Well, here's a way to say, you know what? There's $1.7 million, $1.8 million worth of building maintenance, repairs on town-owned property, having nothing to do with books, pencils, teachers, bats and balls. And, you know what? Let's all get that where Counselor, like Counselor Marone was saying, let's all start getting that more towards one way of handling things. It also sort of falls in line with ideas we've put forward in the past about bunching, you know, bundling together capital expenditure from the Board and the town when we put together bonding ordinances. It's just a different way of looking at doing the same thing, only perhaps making the tax responsibility for funding this a little bit more even across everyone in the community. I think any, I'm not, I'm not going to say this, not any disagreement with this, but I'm not going to be disrespectful to those who disagree with this, but I think a lot of arguments made against this motion are tangential and, as I said, straw man arguments. Thank you.
Mayor?
Members of council, I think we need to clear something up. The $1.8 million is maintenance repairs. It's really not capital. This is, but, but it's, it's not capital expenditures for the most part. We're, we're being given the capital expenditures as far as, as when, when we construct new buildings, when we're, we're doing those projects that are going to last at least 10 years. That's the boilers, the, all of that has been offloaded as Phase 1 and Phase 2, which we bond. This, as I understand it, is the maintenance and repairs. So, this deals with, you know, you suddenly have a bathroom that's flooded, so you need someone to come and repair that. You really, you don't want to be waiting for Public Works or someone to be coming to do that. But where, how would they have this money? If we have the money, how are they going to have the money to affect those repairs?
Because the town's going to do it. Can we, can we wait to be, can we wait to be recognized to speak? Thank you very much.
But we would have to hire more people than in Public Works in order to be going to the schools or stay in the school in order to be immediately on hand to do this. You know, there's, there's all, all of those daily exercises, the school system would have to know who is in the building, why they're in the building. It's best if their employees are there, they know who they are. We, we'd have to add people on the government side, and now they'd have to be cleared as far as being, well, they're not Board of Ed employees anymore, but they're authorized to be there on behalf of the town. Now, let's say it's an outside contractor, an electrician or whatever. Who's going to make sure that they know when that electrician is arriving? There's a lot of practical complications to this, where the person in charge, the entity in charge, the organization in charge of a building, especially the number of buildings and the amount of the budget it represents, almost two-thirds of the budget, that entity should be in charge of what goes on in those buildings and what needs to be repaired immediately and what can wait. That's where the decision-making should occur, and as soon as we add other departments in the mix of that, it's, it's going to complicate it.
Counselor Testa, thank you for your patience.
That was a frightening misrepresentation of what we're talking about. As I said, no one's talking about different people doing the work. No one's talking about new departments, not, the, I don't know how you got there. It's simply a matter of, we hire, the Board of Ed Building and Maintenance Department hires the same people, does the same thing they're doing now, and when the bill comes in, it goes to Jim instead of the business manager of the Board of Ed. As I said, logistically, you could work it out. It doesn't mean the town workers go and fix the toilet. That's not what we're talking about here. And as I said, there are ways to argue against this on certain principles. That's not one of them. That, that's misrepresenting what this is about. I'm, I'm, that's it.
Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At one time in this town, the, the education budget was about 50% of the overall budget, and we're sitting a lot closer to 70% than we are to two-thirds. But despite that, this is systemic of the issue, and this is a lot of what we're talking about here. We're getting to the point that Counselor Marone is kind of lending himself towards the consolidation of services and getting it under one umbrella and less workers, or consolidation of efforts and costs and management and outside contractors all being bundled under the same grouping. As these monies are added each year to the Board of Education money, there's, there's two things you got to remember about that money. It's all packaged together as one lump sum, and it's handed to the Board of Ed. And they've, and I don't want this misrepresented, misrepresented at all. They're completely responsible with every dime they come and ask for and every dime they spend. But once they get it, it's entirely driven by them, what they get done, and they have to deal with some of the stuff. So, the mayor's not incorrect when he says, you know, this year they might spend a million dollars on a bunch of different things, and maybe another year it's more. But we know that certain amount of work has to get done, and they do too, and they do it themselves, because it's, it's part of their budget. The only thing that we're suggesting here is, we're actually suggesting a couple of different things. There, there are ways to keep this budget from growing and, and being responsible about it. We're not... We're not trimming what they're able to do through the education part. They're getting money still to do the same level of education, the same level of services that they've got today, make the increases where they want to make it, and follow through with parts of their strategic plan. What we're doing is we're removing some of the burden. So by doing this, what happens is the following. They don't have to worry about that anymore, and it gets pulled into the regular part of the municipal side of the budget, which brings the taxation of that onto everybody equally the way that it should be. And I don't want to bring up the elephant in the room of the thing that we're all skirting here, which is certain arrangements by certain groups that are not paying towards the education budget. Those were agreements that were put into place a long time ago, and at the time, it was a justified reason for doing it, because we could have ended up with nothing. We're still honoring those agreements by making this shift. We're taking some of those costs away from that budget, putting them here, and then we're also holding that line to the points of debate more than once already. If the education budget has to go up one year for justified expenses, whatever they might be, by 2.5 or $3 million, if we do that, then next year, we have to give them at least that much again, even though those expenses aren't there, and they'll be responsible with the money. But we maybe don't have to go there. And this is one way to do it. It's a way to get started towards that effort to bring those types of costs away from the Board of Ed and back to the Town, the municipal side who owns all this stuff anyway. I really think we should think long and hard before we just vote no, because this is the way we've always done it. Thank you.
Counselor Morgenstein.
Yes, thank you. Well said. Yeah, so I just, you know, I did not make this in a vacuum. I spent a good amount of time speaking with Dr. Menzo, reviewed these numbers that are on line 430, and reviewed how they plan their expenditures. And I think it's worth pointing out that of letters C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, N, P, Q, V, Y, and Z on line 430, almost half of those numbers are in a negative column, and I did not quite understand that, but he explained to me, they get their money, they know the work that needs to be done, they look at each year what gets done, what the historical data of spending and how they're spending it is done. And for example, plumbing was adjusted to a negative $61,542 this year because the plumbing work and the plumbing that got done, they don't need that money right now. So he used the example that if you look at a budget and say, well, our department got $100,000 last year and we want $100,000 this year, they, as the Board of Ed, look at that money and say, well, do you really need it or do you just think you need it because you don't want to, quote, "take a decrease"? His departments realize that if you're getting less money in one year, it's not because you're getting a decrease, it's because you are fiscally responsible and you used that money in a way that allowed that to happen. And so, you know, this idea of, well, we're just giving them a lump sum and they decide how to use it, I'm happy they decide how to use it because they use it in a very well-managed way. This would put the money, and Mr. Bose would have to tell us where that would be and how, into a municipal side of the budget with them able to access it. Nothing else would change, but what would change is the tax dollars coming in would be greater because people who are not paying into the Board of Ed budget would be paying for work that is being done to aging schools that need a lot of work, more and more work every year, more and more money every year that is not education. That frees up education money. Thank you.
Counselor Letourneau.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of questions, one of Counselor Morgenstein. You said you sat with Dr. Menzo and talked to him.
We spoke on the phone.
Okay. What was his take on this plan? Did he have any input or?
That he was happy to have this happen, that he had been told in the past that this was not something that the Mayor wanted.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bose, tell us how logistically this would happen. So would you, I'm going to let you go with it, but where I'm going with this is, do we need, you know, you would need a separate account and?
I would have to think it over, Councilman. I have no idea sitting here at this point.
Okay.
But if I, well, if you just want me to chime in, I'll chime in later.
Well, you know, I like a little chiming now, but.
Want me to chime in now? With public funds, the best internal control of the funds is to assign it to an administrative entity, in this case, to schools, and hold them accountable for those funds. Moving funds out of a budget somewhere else, well, let's just call it for now, whereas I appreciate the attempt to maybe look at revenue. I think that's a great idea, Mrs. Morgenstein, but doing it this way, it misaligns the whole purpose of that internal control. Why don't we take the repair and maintenance for the police department? That's Bill Wright, Chief Bill Wright's responsibility. Same thing with the fire department, Chief Heidgort, he's got the repair and maintenance of many, many buildings. Not the capital items like the roofs and the big items that we would have to get some other source of funding because it really doesn't fit in an operational budget per se. These are costs that fit in an operational budget. These are doorknobs and bathroom stalls. These are not roofs. These are not boilers. We took over most of that stuff, and I know the schools are very happy that we did that. We're already paying that back out of the general government when we pay interest and principal back on the bonds issued. So to relieve responsibility, administrative responsibility of anybody by taking money out of their budget, number one, it's a poor internal control, and number two, I'm very liberal with other people's money, by the way. You know, you give me $100, I'm probably going to spend it, and next year, I'm going to want $102. This keeps all of that in check. And number three, it really keeps the accountability to where lies. I mean, we have, the Public Works budget does maintain our building here, and I believe the building up on Fairfield Boulevard, because that's, and they have the staffing to do that. But, and that's under the Public Works responsibility. Now, you pull that out from Public Works, you pull it out from police, you pull it out from fire department of the schools, who's responsible for all those funds? You just can't use the group thing, well, it's everybody's fault, but it's nobody's fault. There's nobody assigned responsibility for it, and that's a misfire, especially in government.
I understand, I understand that, but I think we're kind of comparing apples and oranges here. If there was a separate account set up and this money got put into that account, it's still only going to be accessed by the Education Department. It's just not going towards.
I'd have to, again, sitting here, Councilman, I'd have to look into certain things when it comes to that, and it's more than just a local matter, it's a state matter.
Okay.
I don't know if we would be receiving less in the education cost sharing grant because our per pupil spending goes down. There's many other variables than simply moving a line item from one portion of a budget to another when it comes, especially when it comes to schools. Now, I don't want to sit here and scare anybody and say, oh, we're going to lose grant money, but I know our per pupil spending would not keep pace with other communities, and that's a factor in the education cost sharing grant.
I, what I like with this, and I appreciate the work that you put into it, Counselor Morgenstein, it is thinking differently than we normally thought. And, you know, we just can't keep doing business as usual, year after year after year, and our budgets are growing, and I think we have to do something like this, get a little creative. And, you know, I understand there could be some ramifications, but, you know, I think it's nothing that can't be repaired or it can't be fixed, you know. What I'm trying to get at is we need to do things like this, and we need to start thinking out of the box, and what can we do better? How can we do it differently? And, you know, this might be a start. It might be a start. And, you know, like any plan, is any plan perfect? No. I've been up here 12 years, I've never seen a perfect plan yet. But I've been up here 12 years and I haven't seen a lot of plans yet. So, you know, it might be something to, you know, to consider and, you know, it's still, this money's still going to be going or still accessed by the Board of Education for repairs and maintenance. It's not like we're taking the 1.7 away from their budget, never to be seen again, and move it someplace else to lower taxes or whatever. They're still getting it, it's just, it's going to be in a different account. That's all. It's just a different account. And so we're really not taking anything away, we're just moving it. And so, you know, it's for specific for repairs and maintenance. So we're actually just going to create a repair and maintenance account, and it's not for textbooks, it's not for any of that. And, you know, I don't know if we need to do that by ordinance or, you know, legally, I don't know how we do it, but I'm sure there's a way we can do it, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Morone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So oftentimes, we're asked the question, what does it cost to fund education in Town? And so it's easy to look at the Board of Ed budget and say, this is what it costs to fund education. But I think if you look at the past, well, all the time I was on the Board and on the Council, the Mayor's been very generous and the administration's been very generous with special projects and funding for capital improvements and so on and so forth. So if you think of the money that you spend on the schools as public education, you're sort of the flip side of the coin with the education cost sharing grant, because we're spending a ton of money on education that doesn't get credited to education because we're spending it from CRA money or wherever it comes from. The Board's going to embark on a, or they're on the facility study idea right now, the idea of improving the high schools. So that money, they're going to look to the Town, to general government to fund all of that through bonding or whatever. So that's really my money that's all being spent on education, but it's already not credited towards the education side of the budget. So I think if you looked at all the money that was spent on education, the education side of the equation really goes way up. I'm coming around on this motion. I think what this is doing is perhaps bringing, you know, once you appropriate money to the Board of Education, you can never get it back, right? The Town could budget for a certain item, like the pool, and if we decided we didn't want to open the pool because we needed to save money, we could not open the pool and you save the money. Once you've appropriated money to the Board of Education, it's gone. So I think the more items that you can put on the general government side, perhaps there's an advantage to the taxpayers to have more control of the money for a longer duration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor?
Yeah, I think that's a hint at what the problem is, because if it's seen as controllable by a general government, that will raise concerns in the Board of Education as well as perhaps run afoul of state rules, regulations with regard to grants. I think at the very least, this requires a lot more thought. We need to know what the Board of Education thinks about it, because again, you can say it's 1.7, 1.8 million, and they may spend far less than that and want the difference to be used for other things, but now they don't have it. And now, according to what you say, Joe, general government could say, well, you're not going to get it because we control it. I doubt that's going to be a welcome news to those who are providing education in the community as elected Education, Board of Education members, and I suspect it does run afoul of state issues over what is appropriated for education and the calculation of what grants we should receive. This requires a lot more inquiry and investigation before we would make a move like this.
Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bose, just help me here because I want to make sure I'm going to make an example, and I want to kind of take it from part of what you said. Right now, for Public Works, Public Works handles the road paving. Is that correct?
They handle, I did not hear what you said.
So when my Public Works goes out and deals with the roads and the paving and the jobs they have to do, they go out and manage and handle and deal with all that, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Now, the money for the paving, where is that held? In their budget, in their line, or is it somewhere else?
It depends on what they're doing. Some of the minor stuff is in their budget or operating budget, some of the, what I would call the capital or reconstruction stuff is in other budgets. We get some state grant funding for roadwork, bridgework, curbing, drainage, things of that nature. We also get the pilot from the Electric Division per an ordinance passed back in the early 1960s, which we use in the six-year capital replacement plan or capital infrastructure improvement plan, I should say. And there's a series of roads that Public Works and Engineering come forward with to present for that year's allocation, so it does come out of the.
Right, so not even just Public Works, but it's also the Engineering Departments. Here we have two different budgets that we pass that they manage themselves, two different departments, two different parts of this budget, their allocation, and then the third, which is the bucket of money through the various sources that you just outlined. So that's pretty much an example of what we just said we couldn't do on the education side. We couldn't have the Board of Education, this department, be able to deal with this line. And I argue we can because we already do. We do that in Town right now. That's one piece of this discussion. Another piece of the discussion was the example that was being used, you know, about the police and the fire and their buildings and their things, there are certain things they handle, and there are certain things that we handle as the Town. The nuance there is that if the police and fire had combination services or needed different expenses for different things and their budgets went down, we could do that. If they still had so many firefighters and so many police officers and their budgets were $1 million apiece and they came to us next year and said, we can do it with $990,000, we could pass a budget for them like that and reduce their costs. We can't do it with the Board of Ed. Once we set a new line in the sand, it's that line no matter what happens. So this is, again, part and parcel with, we can't do it this way, we shouldn't do it this way, we haven't done it this way, it's complicated to do this way, we need to investigate it. We're never going to do it. We should do it. Maybe this makes us do it. There's no reason why the Board of Ed couldn't do it, work with the Town, they work with the Town on so many other different things. We'd like to put together a strategic plan. We would like to try to get some of our costs that are long-term capital things bonded as a part of Town. I can't believe that if we created this line and they came in and said, we'd like to execute part of that line and do X to our properties, that this money's sitting in a line, that we would say no. And if we did, shame on us. We know what that line was created for if it ever gets passed this discussion today. Thank you.
Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just trying to reconcile what I think are two different philosophies behind this motion. So I feel like, and I don't want to misrepresent anyone, so I feel like the intent of the motion, creating a separate account, is a sense of fairness. There's a subset of people who aren't, you feel, aren't paying into the Board of Ed, so you're trying to, you know, rectify that a little bit. But then I, here Counselor Morone of talk about, you know, long-term, where he wants to be, and Counselor Testa made a comment, this is kind of the first step, where you put all the facilities under one department, one leadership structure, so you don't need, as you said, Counselor Morone, you don't need two leaders, highly-paid leaders. So I guess what I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile, do you all agree with that? Because I feel like there's support for this motion, but it's from two very different philosophical ends, and I don't know that you all would go down the path that Counselor Morone would go down because that's why he supports this motion. And I'll just, you know, the bottom line, I mean, the inconvenient truth is, we talk about spending. There's one way you reduce spending in any organization, whether it's TD Bank or the Board of Ed or anywhere, you cut people. People cost, that drives every organization's spending. 80%. The Board of Ed is actually 78%. $81.5 million of the Board of Ed's proposed budget is on salaries and benefits. So we can talk about these different, you know, ways to get, you know, to make it sustainable, but at the end of the day, that's where you make the savings happen. But I'm not saying cut people, all I'm saying, I'm just trying to reconcile what I'm hearing tonight, that's all. I'm just trying to understand, I feel like some councilors want to go down the path of, let's form one department, because there are, I could see there are economies of scale there if you had one department handling, and I'm against that. And I'm against that. And the reason I'm against it is what I said way at the beginning. You know, I don't want Fritz School waiting to repair their playground because they got to get in line with the 200 miles of roads and sidewalks. I don't want that. I like the way it is now. But I get the fact that today, you're not saying that. Today, you're just saying it's an accounting thing and it's more of a fairness thing. So I guess I'm just trying to see futuristically, would you guys go down that path that Counsel Marone is saying or no? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Counselor Laffin.
Yeah, so none of the discussion has really touched upon the legal Pandora box I mentioned. We, however, many years or decades ago, made an agreement or reached a settlement with Ashler Village. And I worry that just kind of on a whim on one night, we're just going to like challenge that without discussion and thinking things out. So I want to go back to something you said, Counsel Xandry, two speaking terms ago, you said, we got to think long and hard on this before voting no. I think we have to think long and hard on this before voting yes. I mean, this isn't just an accounting thing like you say it is. You could, it could be, but it's not, as Counsel Chertel just pointed out. And there are other counselors that would view this as a gain of control and management and micromanagement over that line item. We're talking about making a systemic and operational change all in one night over the course of a 37-minute conversation or whatever it's been. If this is actually going to work, then we shouldn't shoehorn it in in the 11th hour before Tuesday. We should take the next year, working with all the departments, Public Works, Board of Ed, Controller, Board of Ed Business Office, the council, figure it all out and then talk about doing it next year and plan to do it accordingly. You know, last year, we came out, we all came back when we finally got the state money, right? And we had a, we had a bunch of proposals in front of us with all the math and we were trying to get to a zero increase in the budget. And so we made all these motions and I was saying, well, let's wait a week and a half so that we can run all these numbers and make sure we've got everything right. And everybody said, no, 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 let's just, let's just go and do it and get it done. Longing for takes too long. So we took a five-minute break, came back with quick numbers and we still had to raise taxes because we had missed a couple of things. If we had taken a week and a half, we could have gone to a zero increase. Now I know this is going to take more than a week and a half, but that's my example of how we can do things a little better. I'm not saying it's a horrific idea. I have, as I've stated, my legal concerns with Ashler Village, as this could be seen as a, you know, chest pounding of dominance to take something from them. But I just think this is something we need to slow down on because it's not just moving to keep a pool open for a couple of weeks. This is completely different. Thank you.
If we're going to be careful about anything, and my perception of this motion is that this is not going to make an impact on the mill rate. It's just moving, we still have to collect the money. It's moving it from the Board of Ed line to the government line. So the purpose of it is to make a political statement, as far as I can see. We really need to be very careful, to Tom's point, to Counsel Laffin's point about making decisions about how government is run to make statements about how taxes are collected if we're not changing the amount of taxes that are collected.
With that, Counseler Letourneau.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Boz, how does this differ, setting up an account for this money than what we did with the education budget already with the 1% account? That's a separate account.
Well, the 1% is for unused funds that would lapse by budgetary practice and by state statute if they were not allowed to be, I'll use the phrase, carried forward into the new fiscal year by, and that statute says, by the governing body. You folks also do this for the general government side too. You approve things like revaluation. I use that a lot because we put something in our general fund in the Controller's budget for revale because the revaluation happens every five years. Revales can cost between 600,000 and 850, $900,000, depending upon the type of revale you have to do, the interim one or the full inspection one. So we have a choice. So we try to fund that every year, we bring that forward with the council's permission, just like the Board of Ed does with the 1% fund. Probably a lousy, a lousy term that was set up by the state, but it is what it is. But, and that, in the case of revaluations, so when we have to perform the revale and pay for those costs, we don't have to spike the budget up 600 to 900,000 in one year. We have the funds available, spread nicely over four or five years. The 1%, and you folks do that, that's a balance sheet account, actually. I'm sorry to get boring and detailed, but that's, that, once it's done that, it's no longer a budgetary account. Same thing with the 1% fund.
Let me clarify just a second.
Wait, I'm not through, I'm not through, Mayor. Just if you could hold that thought so I could just finish my thought. So what we were able to do is set up that 1% count. The point being is, whatever, you gave us a very eloquent explanation more than I was looking for, but that's all right. So that account was set up, but it's still accessible to the Board of Education. They have access to that money. We don't have, we're not telling them what to do with that money. They still have the control of that money.
That's correct.
John, but the point here is, they had the money and they never lost it. All the 1% says is that they can retain that money within the money they can spend because the state law says they don't have to spend it before the end of the year. There's no new account. They're just holding on to the money.
Understand that. And what's being proposed here is not taking any money away. We're just going to move that, a portion of this money into another account that's accessible by the Board of Education. They're not going to, it's still going to be, the personnel is going to be the same. Nobody at any school is going to have to wait for a town entity, Public Works to come and fix anything. It's still going to be controlled by the Board of Education and, or, I'm going to say Board of Education for conversation purposes. And it's still going to be, if they need something at Highland School, they're not going to wait for Public Works. It's still going to be taken out of that account. The difference is, it's just, it's just in a different account and the bill will get paid. So we're not reducing their budget by anything. All we're doing is taking a portion of their budget and putting it into a different account. Now, you know, technically, could we take, we could take their whole budget and put that into different accounts. I mean, you know, if you really wanted to get into the nitty gritty of this, but I think with this, where this is going is, the point being is, they're still going to have access to it. We're not taking anything away from them. It's not going to lower the mill rate at all, but what it does is, it shifts the tax burden a little bit. That's what the purpose is. It's shifting the tax burden.
But the bottom line is, if it's not in their budget, someone else has control of it.
But it is in their budget.
It won't be in their budget if general government continues with custody of the account. That is not in the Board of Ed budget. That would mean the Controller has control of it and the hierarchy, the people, the council, the people who control the general government budget retain control of it.
Fine. So they can come, they come to, Mr. Boz, somebody mentioned it earlier. They need to, they need to do a repair or whatever needs to be done, they present the, they present to Mr. Boz for that account. It comes out of that account.
But then he doesn't get to write the check without coming before us. So you've got to wait that 14-day cycle to have a council meeting and something might go on.
Maybe.
Well, that's what happens. If you put it in a general government line and you want the Board of Ed to access it...
They can wait 14 days. They can wait 14 days. Any contractor that they're, they're using their own contractors. They're using their own people. They're still going to pay those people. They're just getting reimbursed and they can wait 14 days. Can I call the question?
There's a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. The motion to call the question stops debate and there has to be a vote on the motion to call the question. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion to call the question?
Yes. Fishbein? Laffin?
Yes.
Letourneau?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
No.
Chertel?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Xandry?
No.
Chairman Zervoni?
I vote yes, and there's a tie, which means the motion fails. Mayor, you were about to make a point.
Yeah, I think, I think the point is though, without knowing whether this will influence, it influences a lot of things, but the grants are a significant concern. If this gets counted not in the education budget, it does impact what we will receive in ECS and who knows what else. So we need to know that. My feeling right now is if it's in the general government budget and requires our approval for it to be spent, it will, it will not show up in the EO4 and whatever other forms they file as to what their budget is because they can't depend upon having it. They don't have custody of it. So I think we need to know what the impact is given the state rules and we need to know what the Board of Education thinks about this. I mean, it's a significant amount of money that, however you want to look at it, is coming out of their budget. Maybe they can still spend it, but is this something that they agree with, have questions about it, are excited about? We don't know.
Counselor Xandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I start with my comments, I have a question, like, I guess it would be point of order. Counsel Letourneau had the floor. At the time that the motion was made to call the question, doesn't the person making that call have to be recognized first?
I apologize, Counsel Letourneau, I thought you were done. If I was mistaken, please correct me.
I'll let it go.
I also want it for my own edification because I would look at it that if I wanted to make a motion, any motion, to amend this, to do that, or to call the question, I would think I'd have to be recognized first? Isn't that the way it should work?
He did catch my eye.
I'm not trying to be facetious. I want to make sure I understand it so that in the future, if I ever want to exercise it, which I normally wouldn't, do I have to be recognized first or can I just call it out?
You certainly need to get my attention.
Okay, thank you. So now that, now that I've got that through, I just want to make a couple of add-on points here with respect to, you know, the undertone of what we're trying to do to, and I'm just going to call it out, for the people at Ashler Village. We, this effort is, should not draw their, their attention at all because, and it doesn't affect the original agreement, because the original agreement was, they weren't going to pay the portion of taxes that go to the Board of Education. If we're doing any of this, we're not impacting that agreement. We're changing the way it might cost them, but the formula to get to the end cost is going to be exactly the same. They certainly didn't come forward over the years and go, gee, we feel real bad that the government side of the budget is shrinking and we're paying less. If we were mucking around with the calculations, the totals in the agreement, I could see that, but all we're doing is transferring costs. And I would find it hard to believe, although not in this litigious age, that they would come forward to make that case if we lateraled out some of these costs and they ended up paying a little bit more. If we want to say that the only reason that we're doing it is politically motivated and focused strictly on that, I'm not going to go as far as to say that's not part of my reason to address. Part of the points that were made earlier is if you cut staff at the Board of Education because enrollment goes down and they're more efficient with the number of teachers or they do some sort of reorganization, we still can't give them less money than last year. This is part of getting us there towards that because we're affecting other costs firsts. With respect to, gee, we can't hammer it out tonight, let's put it down the road, I'm only going to call out one past event that happened up here. One of the lines that I tried to cut in years past was the line to the pension. There was money being brought in as a pension line, cost that was calculated that we taxed the taxpayer on, and every year this line was high. We were taking in too much money and then when the budget, when the budget closes, when the budget is done and it's closed, all the monies that are left over have to be zeroed out. So the overage money that we collected in the pension went back to the general fund. I argued that we shouldn't do that. We should lower this line so we're not lowering the taxes. The discussion at that point turned to, well, if the money's left over, we can leave it, we'll pull it back in, but we'll have a discussion about, instead of letting it sit in the general fund, to put it towards the actual line that it was taxed for the purposes it was taxed for, which was adding it to the pension. When we attempted to do that, it failed and that money was collected for the purposes of pension collections. It was overcollected, therefore overtaxation occurred and the money just went back to the general savings account. So my point to bringing that up is there's a lot of times we sit up here and maybe it's true, maybe this is too involved to do in the next 12 days. My concern is we could take the next 12 months and never discuss it and never bring it to an end. Never even revisit this. And then we'd be coming into another budget at some point down the road and we'd be in the same situation again. We'd like to move some costs out, oh, we can't do it, there's only 12 days. So it starts somewhere. This makes us do it. If this line shows up, if this, and it won't, but if this were to pass this evening, the line has to get established, then it's sitting there, we're going to have to work with it. It's no different when we get an unfunded mandate shoved down our throats from Arford. We have to figure it out and make it work. This at least is something that we can control. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Morgenstein.
I just have a mathematical question. I'll let Mr. Boz try to answer. So their total budget, 101,799, so all these questions of how may this affect this or that, what percentage is 1,760,872 of that number?
You mean the 1.7 million? That's your...
What percentage of their total budget are we talking about? Like point oh one?
It's, I'm going to say one and three quarters percent, give or take. Please allow me some wiggle room. I don't have a...
So if we're talking, might it affect this or might it affect student numbers? So the per pupil cost example, do you have any sense of 1% difference?
No, I, sitting here right now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even want to throw that out there because I sure would mislead you. Because I probably couldn't even get you in the ballpark, in all honesty. I wouldn't want to do that to you.
Yeah, okay, I just, thank you.
Counselor Laffin.
Thanks. I just wanted to respond to Counsel Xandry's example, the pension motion, nobody brought it up. So, I mean, it didn't get done because...
No, that's absolutely not true.
Was it on our agendas throughout the year? Did we have meetings about it to discuss it?
We absolutely did.
Committee meetings and then there wasn't a majority?
No, it wasn't. We voted no to leave it in the general budget, but it absolutely was brought up later.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I was the cause of that, Mr. Vice Chairman. The conversation, and I think Jason, you've gotten the points correctly, someone complained that we were not, we were not spending everything in a line item. Now, for the life of me, I can't understand why someone would complain that government's not spending everything it's allocated, but you know, I do what I'm told. We set the pension contribution budget based upon an actual calculation of every employee listed A through Z and what that person's projected salary is and what the actuarial percentage of payroll is, has been determined at that point by actuaries. We don't do that work. So then we, Jim Hutt, our HR director, makes that computation. He and I review it together and we go there and that's the amount that we end up proposing in the budget, which we did on April 1st to the nine of you folks. During the year, you have openings and we budgeted at 100%. We've always acknowledged that. We have openings and things of that nature where the employer's share of the pension contribution need not be made, obviously, because you've got a gap in a... contribution need not be made, obviously, because you've got a gap in a, maybe a month or so to replace an employee who has either retired or moved on. So it did leave some positive variance in that expenditure line item. So then the discussion came, well, you know, this is when the pension plans were, you know, taking a beating and still recovering from the market losses of 2008, if you will. Well, if we, which means your unfunded liability goes up, and I don't really want to get on to all what that means, but anyway, well, why don't you just take the excess in that line item and throw it into the pension plan? It's not the worst idea in the world. But I equated it as to paying a bill that I don't have, and I'm pretty sure I don't have the authority to do that. So I wanted, just to be a little detailed, I wanted coverage. I wanted to cover my rear end because what happens tonight is remembered five years ago. I've been in government 29 years close to, and before that, the real world for seven years. No one remembers what happens, you know, down the road. So I wanted it in the minutes of the council where they were allowing us or approving that, if you will, the movement of the funds, and then it was not, it was not accepted, it was voted down. And that's, that was fine with me. I even stated it. It's, you know, we were only throwing $100,000 or $150,000, if I remember correctly, at a, at a pension plan that at the time had $170, $180 million in it. You know, it's like spitting into the ocean, you know what I mean? But if that's what, you know, if I had authority to do that, I would do it. And it, and it failed, but that's just a little history. I was basically, I was the cause for that.
So, so I think that just proves the point, though, that it was better to wait because it got worked on and it, so it didn't come to fruition. That just wasn't the way it went. I mean, the unfunded mandate thing, nobody likes unfunded mandates, so why are we going to create one on ourselves? Like, why would we treat ourselves like that? Right? Like, we complain every year about unfunded, unfunded mandates.
I only use the unfunded mandate as an example of, of how we have to respond to something.
I just wanted to point out, it wasn't a good example then. I think if this is going to be done right to the, to the original intent of what Counselor Morganstein thought of and worked with you as you second and as discussed with Superintendent Menzow, if you really want it to work, then we'll take the time to do it. Instead of making a big deal about it now, we'll just take our time and get it done. And maybe it won't, and maybe it will. Maybe we're going to find out we saved more money. Maybe I'll be making the motion to do it. But that's not going to happen in the now 53-minute conversation. Thanks.
Mayor, I just want to direct everyone's attention to why I think we need to hear from the Board of Education. The $1,760, $872 is the increase in the budget. So when we talk about, well, the salaries increased, benefits increased, there are a lot of expenses, all the increase is that, we're going to take that increase and put it somewhere else. I think we need to hear from the Board of Education if they feel that's going to be injurious to their operation or not. I, I just, we always hear they need the increase and now we're, without benefit of a comment from them, going to say, "No, we'll take this and put it in a general government account and you can ask for it." I need to know what other elected officials would feel about that.
There appears to be no further comment on the council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Yes. Fishbein? Laffin?
No.
Letourneau?
Yes.
Marone?
No.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Cervoni?
I vote no. Motion fails. I am not aware of any other motions on the budget. Counselor Morganstein, I was aware you had one other, but I believe it was addressed by Counselor Chertel's motion.
Yeah, it will be to Counselor Chertel's.
Okay. And there, if there are no more motions on the budget, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.